I don't have the audio on it. Oh, here.
Good evening, everyone. This is the January 23rd, 2025, meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29th, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided far in the order. A reminder, people who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 415-692-293, or join the meeting via the Microsoft Teams link on the posted agenda. This is a live broadcast and simulcast. Despite our best efforts, though, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. I'd ask you to turn off all gadgets that make any type of noise, if you would, and procedural steps. We take a roll call of all board members first. Then we ask of any citizens or non-members participating in the call, please give your four digits of your phone number for identification purposes. The hearing notice will be read by staff, which is Sarah Clark on my right. You, or your representative, will present your application. Anyone in favor of the application will be asked to present whatever they want to say, and they have up to five minutes to do so, and there's going to be a clock that starts ticking when you start talking. The chair may, I will read or summarize all letters received by the board, and then anyone against or with any questions will also have that five-minute time limit. The applicant may then rebut anything that they've heard. Board members will then direct questions to anyone present. We hear further information, close the public hearing, deliberate, and usually we vote on the application. All votes taken by roll call, and at the end, we will end the meeting with a verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. Voting today will be Dave Veitch, David Nixon, Paul Semple, Lee Hovey, and Virginia Fenwick. And at this point, we're going to do a roll call vote, starting with David Veitch, that approved this form of meeting.
Yeah, David H. Veitch and I approve this form of meeting.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
Paul C. Semple, I approve.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
And Stephen D. DeBoer approves.
And Randy Pardash, I approve as well. It looks like we have two sets of minutes, if I'm not mistaken, Paul?
Yes, I will move to approve the minutes of December 12, 2024.
Does anybody have any comment? Nope.
Uh, Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
Lee votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
And I vote yes as well. And then December 19?
Uh, December 19 minutes, I'll move to approve those minutes as published.
Comments?
I was absent from the meeting, so, yeah.
Can you second it anyway?
I'll second anyway.
Okay, and David Nixon?
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes.
Lee votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, that takes care of that. Our first two applications are going to be requests for continuances, I believe. First one is Minglewood Homes, 13 Captain Knoll's Way, represented by Attorney William Litchfield. Whenever Sarah's ready, she will read the advertisement.
Application number 24-116, Minglewood Homes, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 13 Captain Knoll's Way, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 11C Block 5, Lot H13. The applicant seeks to construct an elevated stairway, landings, and kayak rack under Section 4A 3A of the protective bylaw. The lot contains 57,500 square feet in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Section 8D 2B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from November 21, 2024.
Welcome, Attorney. Welcome, Attorney Litchfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Minglewood. As Sarah has indicated, this proposal relates to stairs on a coastal bank and for fruit to allow for further review by the Conservation Commission, we would respectfully ask that this matter be continued until March 13, a date suggested to us by Sarah.
Does anybody have any comment or concerns? Nope, Paul?
I'll move to grant the requested continuance to March 13, 2025.
Uh, Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have Paula Mildred Ford, care of William F. Riley, I believe represented by Attorney Norcross, 52 Deep Pole Road, whenever Sarah's ready.
Application number 24-134, Paula Mildred Ford, care of William F. Riley Esquire, Peel Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 52 Deep Pole Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 2B Block 36, Lot 20. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions and a deck. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and then it is located 14.6 feet from Deep Pole Road where a 25-foot setback is required, and 12.8 feet from the Easterly Abutter. The proposed addition will be located 11.2 feet from the Easterly Abutter, and the proposed deck will be located 4.7 feet from the Easterly Abutter where a 15-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the removal of two non-conforming sheds. The existing building coverage is 1,330 square feet, 13%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,484 square feet, 14.5%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, in that it contains 10,871 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from December 12, 2024.
Welcome, Attorney Norcross.
Thank you, Jamie Norcross, representing the Fords. This matter was continued from your last hearing for some revised plans, specifically for some changes to the deck. Unfortunately, the plans were not done in time. The architect has completed the plans. They've been sent to the surveyor now to put them on to a revised site plan, so we'd respectfully ask for a continuance until March 13. We should have no problem getting the plans submitted well in advance of that date.
Does anybody have any comment? Nope, seeing none. Paul?
I'll move to grant the requested continuance to March 13, 2025.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes. Ginny votes yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Of course. Third, we have Elizabeth Najarian for 129 Pine Knoll Ave., also represented by James Norcross Esquire, whenever Sarah's ready, 24-146.
Application number 24-146, Elizabeth Najarian, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, Peel Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 128 Pine Knoll Ave., also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 5C Block 45, Lot S39. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and shed, and the construction of a new dwelling. The proposed dwelling will comply with all dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Chapter 40A. Such substantial alteration requires the grant of special permit. The existing building coverage is 983 square feet, 13.9%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,055 square feet, 14.97%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, in that it contains 7,045 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5 of the protective bylaw.
Welcome again, Attorney Norcross. We've had this before, so if you'd like to just go over the highlights, the changes, and we have, you know, noticed that you've listened to our comments, which we appreciate.
Sure, absolutely. I'll just do the high-level changes. If I may, just introduce Steve and Liz Najarian are here, along with their builder, Chris Childs. So, we were here back in September. The main concerns raised by the board were relative to the height and design of the proposed structure. The Najarians and Chris worked to address those concerns, so we provided a couple visual aids. The first main change is the height of the house has been reduced by three feet. It was 29 and 1/2, and now it's 26 and 1/2 for height, so we've come down quite a bit on that item. The design has changed quite a bit, as you can see. This would be the front elevation that would face Pine Knoll, and as you can see, we've added a dormer, which helps in reducing the scale. On the right-hand side, the bump out there, instead of going all the way to the ridge, that's been reduced in height as well, coming off the roof line. There was also the bump out on the left-hand side that went essentially two stories before. That's been reduced to just a one-story bump out. So, we think the cumulative effect of these changes reduces the massing concern that was raised last time, and certainly is compatible with the neighborhood. Madam Chair, if I may, I'll just touch on a couple of the criteria and then
Sure, absolutely.
Move along to questions. Just to highlight, again, we included our analysis with the application, but just to highlight a couple of the items, and this is a rendering that was done by Chris's office as well, and so this would be the elevation that you just saw that faces Pine Knoll. Number one, adequacy of the size of the site. Just to reiterate, we meet all setbacks. We meet the building coverage. We're 3 and 1/2 feet under the height requirement, so I think it's certainly adequate, what we're proposing for this site. Number two, compatibility of the size of the proposed structure. I would suggest it's compatible. The gross floor area numbers, it's been reduced slightly based on this redesign on the second floor, so we're just over 3,000 square feet. Obviously, 1,000 of that's the basement as well. And then, if you go through the, looking at the comparison that I compiled from the neighborhood, I found about, I think, 10 homes in the area on my list that have gross floor areas between 2,500 and 4,000 square feet, so I think at just over 3,000, we're compatible with the neighborhood in terms of size. Lastly, number five, impact of scale setting and mass. I think the change in height, the change in the design, the dormers, all have the effect of reducing the mass and the scale. That was a concern raised by the board at the last meeting. We think it's now very appropriate in size and scale for the neighborhood, certainly not out of, not out of compatibility in that regard. So, Chair, and just to summarize, we don't believe this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and we hope the board is, likes the changes that have been made.
Thank you. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Please raise your hand. Seeing none. Question, women. Reading the correspondence is next, and there is only one. From our, from our health agent, I have reviewed the proposed plan for this property. A floor plan for the existing dwelling must be provided to confirm the existing three-bedroom layout. The second-floor office must maintain an open half-wall into the stairway, and the den must have a six-foot cased opening. I will require the property to be restricted to three bedrooms prior to approving the application. The full foundation must be 20 feet from the septic leaching area. That was received on January 21, 25, from our health agent, Judith Giorgio, and that concludes the correspondence. Now, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that has a question, wishes to speak against this application? Now's your time. Seeing none. Questions from the board. Virginia Fenwick?
No questions.
Steve?
What becomes of the shed that's in the back? Doesn't look like it's on the property.
We're gonna have to move it over onto the property line.
Okay.
Across the property line.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Lee?
No questions.
Paul?
No questions.
David?
No questions. No questions.
And I have no questions either. Yes, Sarah has a question.
So, Jamie, the shed, even though it is non-conforming now, it would need to, for an R20 zoning district, since it's only 64 square feet, if they were to keep it within the road setback, that needs a special permit?
Okay.
That wasn't advertised. Otherwise, it would need to be 25 feet from Sound View, 25 feet from Pine Knoll, and five feet from any Abutter setback.
We will move the shed in a location that complies with setbacks.
Okay. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Uh, Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes.
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 It's unanimous. Deliberations. Dave Veitch?
Nice job. Really nice. The difference, it addressed our concerns and fits, this new proposal really fits the neighborhood well, and I'm happy to support it. Certainly not substantially more detrimental, and it's a surreal improvement.
David Nixon?
I'm very pleased. Sometimes it takes a long time to get to something, and I do hope your clients are pleased.
Yeah, old enough for the house to turn 75 years, so.
Okay. Because it, it looks great.
Yeah, they are pleased.
As Mr. Veitch said, no way is this substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I'll be voting yes.
Paul?
I agree with the previous comments.
And Lee?
I agree as well, but just want to mention that I love this rendering. It really helps a lot.
And Steve?
Yeah, I think it's a good job, and it's a great-looking design, and I think it'll be an asset to the neighborhood.
And Ginny?
Yeah, I agree with all my colleagues. You said that we made, we listened, you did. You made a lot of changes. I think it was very well done. And you said, I hope the board likes it. I do like this. Beats all of our criteria, and I would support it.
Yeah, and I feel the same way. I think the thing with me last time was that you were trying to go over the coverage, and so that's kind of a red light, and it was very tall and skinny, and now, you know, it looks great. Thank you for listening, and the process worked. Paul?
I'll move to grant the application as submitted. I think probably our standard conditions would apply, and that would be all construction activity and vehicles will be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30 and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work should be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Dave Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes. Paul votes yes.
I vote yes. Ginny votes yes.
It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving right along to 36 Old Mail Road, represented by Attorney William G. Litchfield, the Rosky Family Trust Fund, application 24-145.
Application number 24-145, the Rosky Family Trust Fund, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 36 Old Mail Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 14I Block 31, Lot AC3. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and then it is located 15.8 feet from the Westerly Abutter. The existing exterior mechanical system appliance will remain non-conforming, located 21.9 feet from the Easterly Abutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, in that it will be located 15.8 feet from the Westerly Abutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,452 square feet, 12.1%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,799 square feet, 14.9%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 12,000 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Attorney Litchfield, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. Members of the board, Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Sean and Ann Rosky, who are right in the front row. With us also today is Bernadette McLeod, their designer, with whom you're all familiar. Sean and Ann have owned this house for the last 10 years or so, and they are, despite their youthful appearances, although perhaps because they share the chair's passion for running, they are thinking about retirement, and they are looking to make some changes to this house. They would like to replace the existing somewhat curious-looking structure there now, which was originally built around 1945, and has been added on to a couple of times with a classic bungalow. And perhaps, Sarah, it might be even more useful for the board if you would be kind enough to bring up the elevations that I sent to you. The, you know, thank you. That one, I think, gives you a better idea of what is proposed. I know you deal with plans all the time, but by the same token, a two-dimensional plan doesn't have the, the feel that is proposed there. I can't guarantee that there are going to be hydrangeas, but that is the essence of what is proposed. And that particular design is evocative of a house on Cedar Street, Cross Street, rather, Red Madden's old house on Cross Street, which you actually approved some changes to to make it look that house right there. Thank you, Sarah. I could just sit down and let you do this. You're doing it much better than I. But that is the Madden House that you approved for a client of mine 15 or 16 years ago, and they asked Bernadette to design something that would fit into the neighborhood and give some, them some additional space. One of the more remarkable aspects of this end of Old Mail Road is that, with, I think, maybe one or two exceptions, this is and has been a year-round neighborhood. Historically, it's been a neighborhood of carpenters and fishermen and some retirees and several town employees. In fact, the house that is proposed to be replaced was owned, when I was growing up, by a sergeant on our police department, although I was fortunate not to have known him in his professional capacity. But Ann and Sean want to build something of an appropriate scale, something that fits into the neighborhood, so they spent a considerable amount of time talking with their neighbors and working with Bernadette to design a home that would work for them and for the neighborhood, and I think they've accomplished that goal. I know you've got an agenda that is somewhat lengthy, so I won't go on at length. Instead, I'll go into the criteria. As to adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks, the neighborhood was developed long before zoning, so all of the lots are non-conforming. There are a couple now that are conforming, but they're a result of recombination of some old lots. Unlike most of them, and as Sarah indicated in the hearing notice, we are compliant as to the current street setback, and in fact, are setback almost 50 feet from the road, but we have a sideline nonconformity. Clearly, the site is adequate for residential use, as it has been for almost eight, eight decades. I think you can approve the special permit based on a finding that the site is adequate for construction of the replacement house, a dwelling for eventual retirement, which is still compliant as to the street setback, as to height, and as to coverage. Now, I know you looked at the site plan. You said coverage of 1,799 square feet, where 1,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. Ryder &amp; Wilcox, the engineering side of Ryder &amp; Wilcox, in addition to Bernadette, was the first firm to read, to be cognizant of what we'll call the cornerboard issue. So, they aim high. We don't ever want to come back to you for a variance by exceeding the coverage by six or eight or even one square feet. The actual coverage should be approximately 1,665 square feet. In addition, we are going to shrink the depth of the porch. We'll bring it a little bit further to the south. It won't extend quite so close to the street, not that it's close anyway, but we're going to reduce the depth of the porch by about six inches. That will further reduce, give us about 16 square feet of extra wiggle room for coverage. So, we're not nearly, we don't propose to be as close to the maximum as we are requesting an illegal ad. So, there'll be some additional safety margin in that regard. As to compatibility of size, we have a lot which is typical, sort of in the mid-range as to footprint, among the smaller, as to gross floor area and living area. If you approve the special permit, the height remains, as do the coverage. Height and coverage both remain below the maximum, and the house will remain compatible with the neighborhood. While the size increases, the coverage, gross floor area, and living area are still lower than some of them. There's a house almost next door that's almost 18% in fact, and the numbers are on the third page of the handout. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, Sarah read the, the existing nonconformities. There is no increase in nonconformity. We'll retain the Westerly side setback at 15.8 feet, and we have a air conditioning unit which is 21 or 22 feet, but it's pre-existing nonconforming. But there is no increase in nonconformity if you approve the special permit. As to suitability of site, impact the natural environment, site is clearly suitable for the existing house. It is also suitable for the reconstructed house. It is without impact on the natural environment. I know you all went out there in anticipating a potential question. We would like to retain the existing pine trees, which are quite tall. I can't speak to the physical ability to do that with construction, but the intent is to retain them. If that can't be done, we'll be doing considerable landscaping after construction itself, and we'll replace, we'd be putting in some replacement trees if the pines can't be saved. As to scale, siding, mass, views, and vistas, the existing structure, which was originally a small halfcape, has seen several additions and has that curious spiral staircase going up to the second-floor deck, which I doubt is used to view the rear of my office, but somebody built it years ago, and there it is. That's going away. None of those aspects are known for their distinctive architectural style. If you approve the special permit, as shown there, the siding is essentially unchanged, and that front elevation, again, is modeled on something that you approved on Cross Street some years ago. The neighborhood itself has no unified architectural style. There are houses and garages and barns of all, all sorts of style, but I think you can find that that is appropriate. We have considerable neighborhood support, as the chair will read, and I don't know if it was in your original plans that were provided to you, but we did make some changes to the elevations. We eliminated a couple of windows on the east side. Thank you, Sarah. Our neighbor to the east is, is a mutual friend, and Sean and Ann talked with her, and she felt the, thank you. She felt that her privacy would be improved if we removed the windows that were formerly sort of overlooking her house, so those are gone. We have, we've made changes in response to neighborhood suggestions at the outset and that one since the plans were developed. The house will be larger, but it's compliant as to coverage and height. It's important, I think, to note that the top of the foundation, or the measurement from the top of the foundation to the ridge is 26 feet and change. It's not the 29.3. It's because that we're on a knoll that the grain plane average makes us appear higher than it will be. It shows us a 29. It shows us a twenty-nine point three, which is still below the thirty-foot limit, but in reality, you know, a tape measure from the top of the foundation to the top of the ridge is twenty-six feet and change. There are no views and vistas involved, except maybe if you went out in the backyard and you looked at down at Spring Hill Road, and that's not our problem. It's, you know, legally, it's in a butter, but we don't really have anything to do with the Spring Hill Road neighborhood. They don't have any views of us. I'm not sure it goes under this category or otherwise, but the historical commission has reviewed this as well and did not find the existing house appropriate for, or did not impose a demolition delay. As to compatibility of use, there will be residential use, and importantly, there will eventually be year-round residential use, which is a good thing for the neighborhood. As to adequacy of sewage and water, we have town water at Title V for three bedrooms. There will be no change. The Board of Health has no concerns, notwithstanding a glitch in the comment letter about the condominium. I asked Sean and Ann if there was something in my backyard about which I was not aware. No, there's no condominium, as you know from having been out there. It's a single-family residence with just a glitch in the Board of Health comment. No traffic flow and safety issues, no noise and litter problems, and all utilities are there. What is at issue is, as you know, is whether the proposed new house, compliant as to coverage and height, without any increase in nonconformity and with significant neighborhood support, will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The petitioners, again, worked long and hard with their neighbors to design something which met the traditional smaller, if not unified, scale of Old Mail Road houses that would provide them with some additional room for their retirement, but that would be in keeping with the neighborhood. They saw and liked the bungalow on Cross Street and designed, with Bernadette's guidance, a house to fit their needs while echoing many of the architectural details of that other house. Parenthetically, of the nine nearby properties, the current structure is just one of two that are not currently multi-story, so putting on a second floor is entirely normal for this neighborhood. We worked with the neighbors to develop plans which were acceptable to them, starting with an outreach last fall. Again, one neighbor requested a change, which we were happy to accommodate. Recognizing that the house sits on a knoll and the grade plane average calculation would make the house appear taller than it actually is, we made certain that the neighbors on either side, the east and west sides, were both supportive. Their lots are lower. We talked to them about that. They were satisfied. They are. The chair will read letters from them. There's one other abutter with as much standing as anyone else who did not write, because I don't think you wanted to have a letter from me, but I'm in a butter and I'm in support of the proposal as well. In light of the criteria and the plans and in this location, I think that you can find that the proposed bungalow, setback fifty feet from Old Mail Road, is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I have seven letters to read. First one from Judith Giorgio, our health agent, written on one twenty-one twenty-five. She reviewed the proposed plan for this property, and the plan will not increase sewage flow at the property. Next, we have a note from Kathleen Edwards, submitted on January twenty-one twenty-two five. I am Kathleen Edwards, and I live at sixty-two Old Mail Road. I support the application of the Roskys to demolish the existing structure and construct a new home. I feel the new house will fit in with the neighborhood, will use the same footprint, it's attractive in design. I also understand they have listed, listened to neighbors' concerns and made adjustments to their plan as a result. That makes me confident they will also be responsive as the project continues. Next, we have a note from the Community Development Center, the Historical Commission's staff liaison, and that is Christina Bastid. The C H C found this home to not be historically significant in the month of December twenty twenty-four. That arrived on January third twenty twenty-five. Next, we have a note from Mary Ellen and Peter Mazdin, owners of twenty-five, twenty-six Old Mail Road in Chatham, and they tell us on Wednesday, January eighth twenty twenty-five, that they are the westerly abutters of the property at thirty-six Old Mail Road. They reviewed the proposed construction for the property. In this application, are now fully in support of it. The proposed structure is in keeping with the size and style of other homes in the neighborhood. The footprint is similar to that of the existing structure and does not increase the extent of nonconformity with setbacks. Now, we have a note from Barry and Violet Dislay, written on January nineteenth twenty twenty-five. My wife and I are year-round residents, writing to support the petition for a special permit to construct a new home at thirty-six Old Mail Road. We live diagonally across from the street at forty-one. Our understanding is that the plan to build a new home, and then they plan to retire and become full-time residents, we believe a new home with full-time residents will enhance our neighborhood. We have experience in our neighborhood with Airbnb, and that's the last thing we want to see happen to this property. In our opinion, we don't see any, we don't need any more properties that are dormant during the months, six months of the year. A new home that offers the Roskys a comfortable place to live and is occupied year-round will benefit everyone. In addition, we'll be offering our driveway and off-street parking to the Roskys as their builders can use that, so there's not traffic on the road. We hope the board will support the proposal. Next, we have a note from Debbie Harwood, January nineteenth twenty twenty-five. She tells us that her husband and herself live at one oh one Old Mail and are writing in support of the proposed new home. They feel the design and scale is very appropriate, and it'll be a nice addition to the street. Mary Bowers tells us on January twenty-one twenty-two that she lives on forty-two Old Mail and is the, and is the easterly abutter of the Rosky's property at thirty-six. I want to say that I am in support of their project to remove the existing building and construct a new building. The new house will be within the footprint of the existing and in keeping with the other houses in the neighborhood. That concludes our correspondences. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Steve?
I have no questions.
Lee?
I have no questions.
Ginny?
I have a question about the height, Mr. Litchfield. So I think I understand what you're saying. They're on a knoll, so they are, so you're saying in your narrative here that the height of the structure of the house is twenty-six six, but it's reading, it's going to read as twenty-nine, almost the maximum, within a couple, eight inches of the maximum because of the elevation.
Under the required grade plane average calculation. And Bernadette, if you want to come out and join me, if I could, Madam Chairman, because Bernadette designed the house, but my, my understanding from Bernadette is that we are twenty-six feet and change from top of foundation to ridge.
Which is not how we calculate height in Chatham.
No, and we're twenty-nine, we're twenty-nine three when we calculate it that way, below the thirty-foot limit. We did actually consider the possibility of regrading, of lowering the lot entirely. Of course, the neighbors didn't particularly, nobody requested that, but we did consider it because of the height. The engineer at Bernadette's firm, Stephanie Sequin, advised that we would have a problem with water runoff and things like that by lowering it, so we did consider it. Again, though, all but one of the other houses on the street are one and three-quarters or something the assessors call one point eight-five stories. I don't know what a one and eight and a half tenth story house is, but all but everybody, all but one other is that. The, the actual height above the existing ridge elevation is increasing by about twelve feet. From the existing ridge to the top of the new ridge is about twelve feet higher.
Right. Okay.
But if, if the lot was flat, if the lot was flat and didn't drop off on the west side, it would be twenty-six feet, I think, three inches tall. But because the way that you do the grade plane, you have to go out twenty feet in each direction, and that's the only side where it drops off. So everywhere else, it's, it's elevation sixty-six. It's flat all the way around the house, and on that one side, it drops off, and that's what brings it up to twenty-nine, because you have to do the average.
Ma'am, could you just identify yourself?
Bernadette McLeod from Ryder and Wilcox.
Thank you.
So that's why it reads twenty-nine. In other towns, you only go from the front, you don't count, you know, where it drops off.
We're here.
Yeah, so it's just that that's how it reads.
So could you, I didn't see it in your plans. If I missed it, I'm sorry. The ceiling heights?
The ceiling height on the first floor is nine feet, and the ceiling height on the second floor is just seven, eight and a half. And the, the second floor has no bearing on how high the roof is. The roof is sitting on top of the, of the, you know, first-floor ceiling, and because it's a bungalow, you know, and it's a nine pitch, so if we reduce the pitch, it comes down, but it starts to get really squat.
Right.
The Roskys have agreed, if you guys want to reduce the ceiling height on the first floor by six inches, that would bring it down six inches. So instead of a nine-foot ceiling, which everybody wants these days, they would have eight and a half feet.
Okay.
So that would be six inches lower, if that, you know, if that satisfies the board.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Paul, questions?
I have no questions.
David Nixon, questions?
No, my questions had to do with the height, and certainly the two of you have answered them. I would like to ask our building commissar if he has any further comment on heights and scenarios like this.
I think Ginny nailed it.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it makes sense to me. I know what they're saying, the knoll. I mean, we measure from grade plane. It's not ideal, but that's how we do it.
Right.
So from the top of foundation to the ridge, it's nice to know, but it doesn't really, doesn't really mean anything to me.
Thank you.
And David Veach?
Well, I don't think, I don't think Bill could answer this, but I was just curious. I'm curious as to what that existing roof deck, what, what, I had to offer, but I'm sure you can't answer, so I won't really.
I can, because I designed it.
Oh, you, okay, Bernadette, but yeah.
Fifteen years ago, there were two men that owned that house, and they wanted that roof deck.
I knew them, I know them, yeah, yeah.
Extremely fine pianist.
Absolutely. I wasn't sure the house was big enough for a piano, but.
It may well have been, David, Mr. Veach, that the piano was up there. I don't know, but I never heard.
Yeah. No, anyway, that was, I had no other questions other than that. Thanks.
Okay. Everybody got questions? Yes? Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing. You move into deliberations?
David Veach seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes?
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
All right, deliberations. Lee, what do you think?
I think that I like this a lot. I like the design, not that that is one of our criteria, but I like how the design breaks up the mass of the building. I was originally a little concerned with criteria number five, the scale and the mass, but I think the way it's designed, the facade, the front of the house, looks nice, and it just doesn't, it doesn't create a mass issue for me. It meets the criteria, and I will support it.
All right, very good. Steve, your thoughts?
Well, I just want to say I like the, the house that's there now. Maybe sans some of the additions that have been put on, but I think this is a great replacement for that. This is a very nice design. These, the picture that you supplied helps a lot, because it was kind of difficult to tell exactly what it was going to look like from the, from the rough engineering drawings, but this is great. I think it's, I think it's a very nice project. Good luck.
Okay. David Veach, what do you think?
Oh, I'm, I'm very much in support of this. I very much like the design. I think it's a nice choice and great job, Bernadette. I kind of wish we saw more design. I mean, we see a lot of things come for us, proposals, and in some ways, I wish we saw more like this one. It's really a nice design. So based on that, and the, I, and when I, you know, of course, looking at the design and looking how much of the ridge, how much ridge there actually is what approaches the twenty-nine foot, twenty-nine point three feet from the grade plane, I, I don't, this is not going to read as a tall, massive structure in any, in my judgment, anyway. I'm not concerned about the height. I appreciate that, I don't, and I don't think that them giving up six inches of ceiling height on the first floor is going to significantly visually reduce that in a way that's, that's, I think, necessary. So I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is. I think it's a really nice solution to replacing the structure that's there, so I'll be supporting it.
Okay, thank you. David Nixon, deliberations?
Initially, I was concerned about the height, but I think your explanation of Bernadette's has satisfied me that it is not going to loom up there as I thought maybe it would. And to what Dave was just talking about, that would only affect the height of your Christmas tree. That's all the six inches is going to do. So I appreciate the offer, but I don't think that that is necessary in this scenario.
It often is, but not today, perhaps. Ginny?
So I agree. I think that the design does mitigate the mass. Thank you for the offer and the explanation about the extra six inches. I don't think six inches will make a meaningful, I think, the benefit to the, to the applicant and the homeowner, I don't think it's worth. I was concerned about the height, because that lot is elevated and all of the other abutters do drop off, but they've all written in in support. I mean, I think, except for maybe, I don't think we heard from fifty, the neighbor behind, but maybe I missed that, fifty-five. So, you know, I listened to my colleagues. I think what Lee said about five, I was a little coming in here thinking criteria five, the mass, but, you know, David Veach is, is our, kind of our resident construction guy. So are you. And I, I think the design of this house, and I also appreciate that you're modeling it after this iconic Cross Street house. I, I, I think that's great. So I think the design wins over, and I am not concerned about the height.
And Paul?
Well, I echo the same comments that my other colleagues have made. I had some concern about height. I actually think that the rendering that's provided here is not helpful, because I think it makes it look gigantic and massive. I think what was a better representation of it was the shot of the house on Cross Street, which I think is more appropriate for what we're actually looking at here. So I think it meets our criteria. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And I like it, too. So, Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I think in the neighborhood, it probably needs our standard conditions. All construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. Between June thirtieth and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between eight AM and five PM only.
David Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes?
I vote yes. Ginny votes yes.
And that's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And next up is forty-six Barnhill Lane, Kevin Costello Trust, two thousand and eighteen, and Sophia Costello Trust, two thousand and eighteen, represented by James Norcross Esquire. Application twenty-four dash one five oh, and Sarah's ready.
Application number twenty-four dash one fifty, Kevin B. Costello Trust, two thousand and eighteen, and Sophia Costello Trust, two thousand and eighteen, care of James Ebner Cross Esquire, P O Box seven oh seven, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three. Owners of property located at forty-six Barnhill Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, nine C block nineteen, lot thirty-five. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a nonconforming dwelling in a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and it is located twenty-one point six feet from the road and fourteen point nine feet from the easterly abutter. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming, and that it will be located sixteen point seven feet from the road where a twenty-five-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is seven hundred ninety-five square feet, five point six percent, and the proposed building coverage is two thousand and seventy-eight square feet, fourteen point six percent, where fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and it contains fourteen. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 14,274 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5, be of protected by law.
Welcome back. Tony Norcross.
Thank you, Jamie Norcross, representing Kevin and Sophia Costello. Kevin and Sophia are in the back, next to Dave Clark this evening. This, in my first application, is a return to the board. We were here back in the summertime, in front of you with a different proposal, and at that time, some of the board members were not in favor of the plans. The main objections raised by the board were the street setback to Barnhill Lane, as well as the proposed design, which had a very large dormer in the middle of the house, that raised concerns relative to, excuse me, massing and scale. These are the, the new plans in front of you today. The Costellos worked with David Clark to try and move the house further away from the street, and with their architects revised the design of the proposed house. So it's been moved, in terms of changes, the house has been moved back almost four feet further away from Barnhill Lane. As you may or may not remember from the prior hearing, because of the ski slope nature of the lot, we're severely limited in how far we can move it back. The further back you go, we then trigger the 30-foot height limitation, because the slope is so significant, and similar to the application you just heard with the average grade plane, when you have to factor in the significant lower elevation on the back, it greatly restricts the ability to move it further back than we have. David was able to, through the use of a retaining wall that you see on there that wasn't proposed previously on the back, and raising the grade a little bit, has allowed the house to be able to, to move back almost four feet, 3.7 feet, while maintaining compliance with the 30-foot height limitation. The design, as I mentioned previously, there was a large middle dormer that extended out over the entire width of the porch, and that was a concern for several of the members. Mentioned that it was just kind of out of scale with the neighborhood, out of scale with the street. There was concerns raised that if you're coming toward the house from the west, or if you're coming from Barnhill Road onto Barnhill Lane, that that middle section would really overwhelm the streetscape, because it was just so large and how far it was extending. So their architect came up with what you see in front of you now, which is the two dockhouse dormers with the shed dormer in the middle connecting. They do not extend out over the porch like the prior design, so the scale of those dormers are much less than what was here previously on the prior application. And I think from a visual aspect, it's also probably more compatible with other designs that you see in the neighborhood from driving around in terms of, there's actually a house almost directly across the street that has a very similar dormer structure at 27. So we think in terms of visual character and compatibility with the neighborhood, this design is, is a significant improvement. Lastly, there was about a 300-square-foot reduction in the gross floor area as a result of the second level is reduced in size with this dormer as opposed to the larger dormer that was used on the prior application. So just briefly, I'll touch on three of the criteria, excuse me, and we can move over to questions. Number one is adequacy of the size of the site. We meet all setbacks, we, with the exception of the street setback, which, as I explained, we are limited in how far back we can move the house because of the slope at the back. But we do meet all other setbacks, and we are below the 15% maximum building coverage allowed. Number two, compatibility of the size of the structure with neighboring properties. I don't recall, and from reviewing, reviewing the video, I don't think there's a lot of concern about the actual size of the structure in terms of gross floor area numbers. I think we're very consistent with the neighborhood, pretty much right in the middle, it looks like, from those numbers. So again, I think we do comply with criteria number two. Number five, impact of scale, size, and mass. I think these changes, the cumulative impacts of moving it back almost four feet, the significant change of the dormer and the design reduces the scale and massing concerns that were raised at the first meeting. In terms of height, again, it shows it at 29 feet, basically the same as the prior application. But as seen from the street, the, the elevation would essentially be 25 feet, because you're at, the slope is so significant. So when looking at it from the street, it's really about a 25-foot tall house. But when you factor in the average grade plane, as I know we have to, that's how we measure height in Chatham, that's where it triggers the 29 feet. But again, I think the changes that the Costellos have made, and I hope you agree, are significant, and I do think they alleviate the massing concerns that were raised at the prior meeting. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody here, or on Microsoft Teams, that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none. I have three form letters and one letter from the Health Department, so I'm going to read one form letter and the letter from the Health Department. Judith Giorgio tells us on January 21, 2025, that she reviewed the plan for the property. The plan will not increase sewer flow to the property, and she has no concerns about the project, and she is a health agent. Then the form letter says, Dear Ms. Potash, I own the property at 56 Barnhill Lane, and I am the director abutter for Kevin and Sophia Costello. I wrote in favor of their prior application, and I'm writing once again to express my wholehearted support for this, for their proposed plans. I understand members of the zoning board were concerned with the impact the prior design would have on the streetscape. By significantly altering the design and massing of the second story of the proposed home, and by moving the home further away from Barnhill Lane, I believe the Costellos have addressed those concerns, and the home will be compatible in terms of size and design with surrounding homes in the neighborhood in general. It's my opinion the proposed house will represent a significant improvement to the neighborhood, and I wish the Costellos the best of luck. That was from Matthew Evans, 56 Barnhill. Same, Alan Hasbacher from 43 Chatfield Lane in Chatham, and also James Dolan and Janice Fahey at, their address is maybe not indicated, unless I'm just not seeing it. 36 Barnhill Lane. That concludes the correspondences. Is there anybody here, or on Microsoft Teams, that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Seeing none. Questions from the board. David Veach.
I have no questions.
David Nixon.
Just a comment. But I don't like it when I see a two-bedroom house that has a bonus room.
Right.
That's exactly the same size as the bedroom, it's just depending which way you're looking. And that the bathroom is not accessed from that bedroom, it's in the hall. So the bonus room, you know, I just get this bad feeling. Before you know it, it does kind of become a bedroom, and I know there's nothing we can do about it. It's that term, I wish they'd call it romper room or some damn thing, you know? I mean, it just doesn't work for me.
Yeah, they have two children, you know, getting married, expanded. So, yeah, I imagine people might be sleeping in there. It's not intended to be used as a three-bedroom, but again, given the size of their families, I just feel like having that extra space.
Right. Do you know, I don't think the sewer's on the street, so do you know when it's scheduled to happen?
I think it's actually fairly soon. David, do you happen to know?
David Clark, Clark Engineering. My understanding, it's about five years.
Five years out?
Yeah. You can throw a rock and hit the end of the sewer main. It's stubbed onto this road, it's just, it's two doors down. So it's close, but not there yet.
But no cigar, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately.
So I presume, gentlemen, that when that happens, I would apply to have a legal three-bedroom. Would that be a correct assumption?
We didn't, I would assume so, yes. Generally what people do when they have the ability to.
They're right there, so you can ask them, but.
Sure. Is that the plan, Kevin? Yes, it is.
Anyway, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just a fact, and I have to live with it. But the rest of it, thank you very much. I mean, you moved it back, you got rid of that problem in the middle.
Yeah.
It doesn't loom over the street anymore. It's entirely different to me. And with Mr. Clark coming up with that retaining wall, that was a, that was a great idea.
Yeah, it certainly was.
Anyway, so I'm very pleased, and thank you and your clients.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, questions?
I have no other questions. I have the same hesitation that Dave has about the bonus room, but I've been asking about bonus rooms for months now, and I keep getting the same answer, you know? Nobody knows what a bonus room is, but it is there. I have no other questions.
And Lee?
No questions.
Steve?
Is there going to be fill brought in for the backyard?
I believe so. Yes, there is.
And how high is that retaining wall going to be? And what it's, what is it going to be constructed of?
I'm just going to have David come up and answer those, if I may. The retaining wall can only be three feet high, because it's within the setback, a portion of it's within the setback of the abutters. So.
And, and what is that going to be made out of? What, how, how are you going to construct the wall?
Well, we haven't designed it yet.
Okay.
But given that it's only three feet, it, there's a lot of options, as opposed to if it was eight feet of fill, so.
Right, okay. Good, thank you. And then is the house, the finished house, going to be slightly below the level of the road?
It is.
Like the house that's next to it, I think?
Correct, yeah. It looks, David's plan shows it's, the grade is going to be 50 at the street, and the house, it'll be 48.
Right, so it'll be slightly down.
Yep.
Okay, like the house next door?
Exactly.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Questions? Virginia Fenwick.
My questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing. You move into deliberations.
David Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes?
I vote yes. I vote yes.
Okay, so deliberations. We'll start with Lee again.
Okay. Well, I think this looks very nice. I appreciate the change in design. I think it's, you know, really helps with the mass. And I just, I think it's much better. I, I like the fact that it's moved back from the street a little bit. And I don't think it will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I will approve it.
And Ginny?
Yeah, I, I think it's a tricky lot. We talked, you know, and I, we talked a lot about that last hearing. I do believe you've presented evidence of hearing, and your applicants listening to the feedback that we gave last time. I see that incorporated in the redesign. You know, I, kind of the concern as well about the bedroom, but I think it meets the criteria, so I could support it.
And Steve?
Well, again, I appreciate, you know, taking some of our suggestions from the last time. I think it's a much better design than it was, and I think it'll fit more easily into the neighborhood now. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
And David Veach?
Yeah, I agree with the previous. I, it's, you know, it's, it's interesting to see what a, that change in the dormer, what a difference that makes architecturally, and in with the building's ability to fit in on the street. And I, I, I'm not sure, I, I, you know, we're thinking about the, the issue of bonus rooms and, and additional bedrooms and all that. I mean, I was, I was speaking to someone last night, and talking about just reflecting on, on some of what we see, and I, I said something in effect to him of, well, I don't know that anybody's compiled any statistics on this, but we, you know, over the course of the time I've been on this board, we see any number of bedrooms added to houses. Usually it's a bedroom, put in an IA system or hook up the sewer something. Something's been going on for quite a long period of time. And, and so in this case, I, and I, and I applaud the honesty of the applicants and Jamie's presentation. They're anticipating a sewer hookup and ability to add, so I don't really hold that against them, because I don't find that to be a, a unique situation particularly. And, you know, I have mixed feelings about, about all of it, but it's certainly something that's been going on on some basis for quite a while. Now, the bonus room thing is actually a little bit different somewhat, you know? So, you know, we, we kind of sit and, and try to decide how do we, how do, or, you know, how much do we, and we can express our opinions, but I'm not sure sometimes how, how much we want to let that affect our decisions with respect to everything else, so. Enough said. I think this is a real improvement, and, and I think I indicated I could support it before, but I, this is a group, a much improved proposal, and, and I definitely will support this one. Thanks.
And David Nixon, deliberations?
Well, I think I've stated my concerns, and they have nothing to do with whether it's substantially more detrimental or not, just facts and things. So I noticed today the budget that our town manager is coming out, who should like five or six additional employees. Maybe one of them can be in charge of, so where did that term "bonus room" come from? And have a white paper submitted for all of us to read.
Paul, deliberations?
I think I've indicated that I would support the application the first time around, and I think this is an improvement on that, so I'm certainly going to support it. Not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
So if I were voting, I would also support it, but I do think that when you think about adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, number seven, and number 10, adequacy of utilities and other public services, I think we're well within our, our right to question things like that, because they absolutely point to the criteria. And so we're not shy about doing that, and we find, in this case, it all evens out. And Paul, what do you say?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the standard conditions that all the construction activity and vehicles would be contained on site or at neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. That between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction shall be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
David Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes?
I vote yes. Ginny votes yes.
Again, unanimous.
Great, thank you very much.
Congratulations. Last but not least, 134 Potennumicott Road. Gwendolyn J. Leonard and Joseph, here's another one. Schaffenberger, senior trustees, attorney William Litchfield. And this is application 24-147. When everybody's ready, no rush.
Application number 24-147, Gwendolyn J. Leonard and Joseph M. Schaffenberger, senior trustees, care of William D. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 134 Potennumicott Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 9J Block 58, Lot C158. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 18.2 feet from the western abutter. The existing exterior mechanical system appliance will remain non-conforming, located 18.2 feet from the western abutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed additions will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,943 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,526 square feet, where 2,900 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 24,405 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5, be of protected by law.
Tony Litchfield, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Bill Litchfield here, behalf of Gwen Leonard, who is seated next to her builder, Chris Cannon of Patriot Builders. I recognize some of you have some traveling this evening, so I will try to be brief. We are here this afternoon because Ms. Leonard happens to be an artist, and I've passed out a couple of photographs. Unfortunately, I got them late, so I can't provide them for all of you. But she's seeking an artist's studio, and I'm passing out the pictures to demonstrate that the purpose is an artist's studio and not a romper room. Given the prior hearing, I wanted to be able to demonstrate that to you. Mrs. Leonard has owned this house for the last 20 years, and that is exactly the problem right there, that which Sarah brought up. She uses the, the existing room above the garage for both a home office and her studio. She uses the existing room above the garage for both a home office and her studio. As you can see, not perfectly, but as you can see, the eaves are somewhat limiting. It's hard to stand up there and beyond that, a home office and the aromas and fragrances of oil paint are not ideal in the same place, so Mrs. Leonard is seeking some change. She's not unfamiliar with municipal government and what you do here, having served on the planning board when she lived in the town of Harvard, which actually has a population almost identical to ours. Now that she's had the good sense to come here year-round and leave behind the joys of volunteering in town government, she wants to spend more time on her passion, which is painting. She's exhibited in many juried shows and teaches an art class under the auspices of the Pleasant Bay Community Boating Group, with which I expect you're familiar. So she's tried to make use of the small area above the existing garage, but it just isn't conducive to what she wants. Moreover, as I said, she'd like to separate her home office, something which many of us have, and keep it distinct from her studio. Beyond that, converting the first floor of the existing garage to a family room would provide better access to a very nice patio at the rear of the house, which is now accessible only through the, through the kitchen. More importantly though, she'd like a dedicated studio without using a garage and with recent weather, it's reinforced for all of us as to the usefulness of a garage. So in working with Chris Cannon and her Patriot and her engineer, Tom Stello, she developed a plan which will allow all of that to happen in full compliance with all of the requirements of the bylaw. You've been to the site and you understand that the work will be done at the rear of the lot and with the prohibition on exterior construction during the summer months. The front elevation is what you see now from Potenumicat. The right side, frankly, nobody really much sees. The, the other side, the left side is where the garage is. And it's also important to note that it's significantly lower than the existing house because of the slope of the lot. And when you drove down the driveway, you know it already slopes down. It'll slope down further with the new garage at the rear. So as to the adequacy of site, all 350, give or take, River Bay lots are non-conforming. Our existing coverage at 8% is at the lower end of the neighboring properties and unlike many, if not most, we conform to the existing 40-foot street setback. The site is entirely adequate for residential use and it will remain so if you approve the conversion of the existing garage to living space with construction of a garage and an artist's studio above, all of which will meet every setback height and coverage requirement of the bylaw, that is, it's completely complying. As to compatibility of size, we have an average lot with a relatively small footprint in the mid-range of gross floor area and living area. The proposed coverage at 10.3% is 374 square feet below the maximum. It's not even close. It remains consistent with the neighborhood. The gross floor area and living area obviously increased, but still lower than some and remaining compatible. As to the extent of increase in non-conformity, we have two lot size on the Westerly sideline. There is no increase in non-conformity whatsoever. Rather, we're totally conforming. The addition will be 37.1 and 42.2 feet from the sidelines where only 25 feet is required. From time to time, members of the board comment that they don't like to see increases or significant increases in non-conformity. Here, there is none, absolutely none. As to suitability of site, impact on natural environment, the site is suitable for the existing house, which has been there about 20 years. There are no environmental issues. The site is suitable for the garage at rear. It's without impact on the natural environment. I should point out in regard to the natural environment that the applicant, Gwen, proposes to retain or replace as necessary the vegetative screening along the side property line, which she planted 20 years ago. So she is not, she doesn't plan to cut down the trees any more than necessary to trim them for construction because Leyland cypresses tend to spread horizontally. As to scale, siding, mass views, and vistas, the existing structure is a very attractive full cape with doghouse dormers set far back from the road with the garage at rear. It has a positive impact as shown there on the streetscape and that will remain if you approve a special permit. The siding and the facade are unchanged. Conversion of living space of the existing garage with a new garage at the rear, certainly the house will be larger, but it's rather hidden and the scale is in keeping with surrounding properties. There are no views or vistas involved. As to compatibility of use, there is no change. Adequacy of water and sewer, we have town water and a Title V, there is no change. We changed, revised the plans before we even submitted them after Chris spoke with Judy Giorgio to ensure that the home office wouldn't meet the bedroom definition. We talked or offered to execute a covenant, but the Board of Health has no concerns because of the way the rooms are laid out. The other criteria are not really applicable. All utilities are in present and there's no art, there's no noise and litter involved with painting. The issue, of course, is whether the proposed conversion of a garage to living space and construction of a new garage at the rear, which would provide Gwen with significant great, greater utility for the, for her as the homeowner, while meeting all current zoning requirements, whether those changes are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current structure on a non-conforming lot. The additional space for a functional home office, and I should stress, non-commercial artist's studio as well as a new garage, I think you can find the proposal meets all of, I know that it meets all of our current bylaw requirements, and I think you can find it's not substantially detrimental. Ms. Leonard, like others in the neighborhood, has dealt with two recent construction projects and while she wouldn't undertake summertime construction anyway, we would request that you impose what you refer to as your standard conditions, that approval be conditioned that on there not be any summertime construction. Similarly, again, she's committed to preserving a vegetative screen along the abutting property line. The chair will read a handful of comment letters and I know she'll provide me with an opportunity to simply comment briefly on one of them and I think I'll be able to provide you some reassurance in that regard. So in light of the criteria and the plans in this location, I think that you can find the proposed change is not substantially detrimental and I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, I will read the, the notes and one is from the Health Department, has stated, Judith Giorgio, our health agent, tells us on January 21, 2025, that she reviewed the proposed renovation in addition to the property. The dwelling will maintain the existing two-bedroom floor layout. The new family room and studio must remain open with open stairway rails and a six-foot cased entryways. The new addition will not encroach on the existing septic system and she has no concerns. Next, we have a note from, let's see, Edwin Whitaker, 827 Riverview Drive, received on January 21, 2025, and let's see. With regard to 134, the address on the application, I have no concerns with the addition itself as it does comply with dimensional and mass requirements and the existing non-conforming external mechanical system will remain the same as it is now. However, I did have concerns about the builder's work schedule due to possible related noise and parking issues that could be associated with the construction, bar the property addition to be done. Although the Whitakers at 827 Riverview are not Director Butters to 134, our home is just two houses away from said property. My concern came about due to a very unpleasant experience with construction work nearby our property done in 2024 that had significant impact on personal use of my property last summer. I don't want my family to lose another summer of being able to enjoy the backyard and deck. This resulted last year because of the excessive noise and ongoing construction work on intermittent days, 8 to 8, including Saturdays and Sundays. In addition, I was also concerned about possible spillover parking of construction-related vehicles and potential safety and visibility issues. As background information, Riverview Drive serves two-to-four entrance streets to River Bay, a residential community containing 20 roadways within the boundaries. It's heavily trafficked and the intersection of, is only a short distance from the major point to the neighborhood entry. There is no stop sign and there's a curve that's notable and it's not too far from the number 134 affecting visibility when driving in either direction. I contacted Ms. Leonard to discuss concerns about noise, unreasonable work schedules, and possible safety issues. In our discussion, Ms. Leonard was able to verify onsite hours of the builders with their regular work schedule being Monday through Friday and their work hours have a reasonable time start, 8 to 7, no, 8:00 AM and 7:00 for some specific types of work. Additionally, the builder agreed to have crew and associated vehicles limit parking onsite and Ms. Leonard also assured me that in the addition of studio space was for her private and personal use and not for any commercial-type activity. As a result, the discussions and assurances that she provided above issues, to the above issues, I have no objection to the special permit. This is from Edwin Whitaker by Janice Whitaker, P.O.A., 827 Riverview Drive, Chatham. Next, we have a note from Daniel J. Hill and this was on behalf of his mother. I am responding, and this was written on January 20, 2025. I'm responding for the owner of the abutting property located at 840 Riverview Drive, Mary C. Hill. I am her son and a tenant of our property for many weeks during the year. Regarding the application at issue, we are not in support of the proposed addition to the existing structure. Our concerns relate to the scope and size of the addition, the accompanying noise for construction, the prospect of looking at the back of the addition where we, where now it doesn't rise above the tree line. It's a substantial change from the existing footprint. Maybe if we learn more about the project, we might feel differently. We don't know. If the applicant has offered to mitigate the above-mentioned concerns of the abutting properties in some fashion or not, rebuttal.
Thank, I don't know if there's anyone who's opposed.
All right, I'll do that, sure.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yeah, is there anybody against this application or has a specific question? Please indicate. No?
Thank you, thank you. And I'll be brief. Mr. Hill gave me an opening because he said he didn't know certain things, so I contacted him. I called him and we had a very nice discussion. I explained that we would request a condition of approval imposing a requirement there be no exterior construction during the summer and I explained that, you know, like his mother, we've had to deal with the noise. I also explained that, yes, there will be mitigation because Gwen would like to maintain or install a vegetative screen along her property line. And again, because of the slope of the lot, the garage will, will be lower than the existing house. I said there were no additional bedrooms, no change in occupancy, non-commercial use. And I also explained to him why we're here, that all of the lots in River Bay are non-conforming. He thought that because this was an appeal that we'd been rejected for something and I explained the rather very simple rules under which we operate as to why we're here. I said that I hope that that was of some help and I would let him, you know, he could certainly feel free to let me know if there are any other questions or concerns, so I think we assuaged his concerns and those of his mother. Thank you.
Very good. Questions from the board? Lee?
I have no questions.
Steve DeBoer?
I have a question.
No, I'll go to Ginny and then we'll come back to you then.
I have a question perhaps for the engineer about it, the turning radius for the new location. It seems like it's kind of, I just wanted you to clarify. There's no issue there with, because it's kind of really, it's really backing into that corner of the lot.
You may have had the same experience I did when you went down there the first time. It's tight now.
Yeah.
I think it actually may be a little bit better, but Mr. Cannon of Patriot Builders may be able to respond.
Actually, it's Chris Childs from Patriot Builders?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I'm not the engineer, I'm the builder, but yeah, it's, it's about the same. The turning, the turning distance is going to be about the same.
Because you're adding a little more onto the driveway?
Yes, yeah, we're expanding it. Look at the site plan there. Yeah, so she's got about the same amount of space to back up as she, as she did before.
Is the retaining wall new or is that already there?
No, it's new and it's there because as you see, the, the grade currently drops off quite a bit as it goes to that, that's southeast corner, so we've got to raise it up in order to be able to drive down there and, and create the driveway and pull into the garage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, back to you.
I was going to ask if there was any consideration about putting a dormer or something on the existing garage.
We did, we did think about various possibilities and it, it would help, but it wouldn't give her the living space, the family room that she'd like to have downstairs. She only has one daughter, doesn't have any grandchildren plans at present, but would like to have the opportunity for that. So we did think about it, but it, it doesn't give us what we really need, nor would it separate the home office from the artist's studio.
If I may, that's sort of a very large blank canvas of roofline on the existing roof and I just thought if you wanted to break that up slightly, it might look a little bit better, but that's just a suggestion.
Okay. Lee, did I already ask you? Yep. Paul, questions?
No, I had the same question that Ginny was talking about, that, you know, going down that driveway and then trying to get back out again is not easy, given the vegetation growth in that area. But I think probably that's an area that they can deal with themselves. I don't think, see it as an issue for us as such.
David Nixon?
No questions.
David Veitch, questions?
I have no questions.
Okay.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Veitch seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
All votes yes.
I vote yes. Ginny votes yes.
All right, deliberations. David Veitch.
Well, I'm, I'm in support of this. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I, you know, when I read the letters, neighbor, the neighbors' letter, concerns and things of, well, you know, what they're proposing meets all the requirements with respect to setback and everything else and so I, with all respect to the neighborhood, I don't think they're asking for anything that they shouldn't feel entitled to, you know. And so, you know, it's not, and I don't see that it would be problematic for any of the neighbors anyway. I mean, I think it's a, it's a nice proposal. It accomplishes what she, what they'd like to accomplish and, and it's certainly not substantially more detrimental. It meets our other criteria, so I'll support it. Oh, and the only other thing I would say is sometimes it's really handy to be driving a Jeep when you're turning around in a location like that.
Yeah, definitely.
David Nixon?
No, I, I think in that neighborhood, this makes total sense and all the setbacks taken care of, I don't think it'll be visible except for maybe someone in the back in a very mild way. I believe it should be supported.
Paul?
Yes, I think the setting of the house certainly lends itself to this kind of a change and it would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Maybe I shouldn't be taking my stretched limo down there and trying to back up and around the way you can with your Jeep, but I, I plan to support it.
Maybe have your driver do it for you.
Lee, what say you?
I agree with my colleagues. I think this is a great idea. I think it fits very nicely on the lot and in the neighborhood.
Steve?
I think it's a good idea. It seems like a nice project and I think that the neighbors' concerns will be addressed when we, when we set our rules, so I think it's a good project.
Yeah, and Ginny?
I agree with all my colleagues and it meets our zoning criteria, so I would approve.
As do I. And wait, David Nixon?
One last comment. Now I understand who owns that new Hummer I saw out in the driveway. Congratulations, Paul.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the conditions that all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on site or neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. That between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work will be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
David Veitch seconds and votes yes.
Yes.
All votes yes.
Yes. Ginny votes yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right, well, that concludes our presentations for this evening and we'll have a motion to...
I'll move to adjourn.
Adjourn.
David Veitch seconds and votes yes.
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 All votes yes.
Lee votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
All right, we are adjourned at, what time is it, Sarah?
5:27 PM.
How do you like that? Good night, Chatham.
Cheers.[1777.71]